Okay, good evening and welcome to the Town of Brookfield's October 5th, 2021 Select Board Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which expands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, so we will start with, let's start with old business from the top of the hit parade here. It looks like we have job descriptions for health admin clerk as revised, the building inspector, plumbing inspector, and wiring inspector. Did anybody have any feedback or questions about those job descriptions?
No, I looked them up and I thought they were fine.
Okay, yeah, I looked at the advanced copies as well. And the inspectors, that's pretty much aligned with Mass General law.
Yeah, they are described by Mass General.
Alright, so can I get a motion to approve?
I would like to make a motion to approve the revised job descriptions for the New Orleans City Hall.
Sure.
Okay, for the health administrator clerk, building inspector, plumbing inspector, wiring inspector.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then Kelly was gonna provide us with progress on the town meeting articles.
The boiler is complete. We were waiting for an inspection, but it's small enough that it doesn't require a special inspection. So that's no longer necessary.
Okay.
The roof cleats are completed. It's just a matter of paying the invoice on that.
Great.
We don't have any progress on the shed for the transfer station yet. The 18 Commons Street purchase, we got the notice of acceptance of deed that you'll be signing at the next Select Board meeting. That came in tonight around five o'clock.
Okay, great.
So title search is done, all bells and whistles are ready. It's just a matter of closing and filing paperwork.
Outstanding.
So house done.
That's good.
I did not check with Kathy on the walking path, but as of yesterday, it wasn't started.
Okay.
And I went out, I found a commercial chairlift vendor and I'm waiting for a quote.
Nice, thank you.
That's where we are with those.
Great. The Town Hall Improvement Committee thanks you.
Well, we'll see if we get anywhere with it. They can thank me later.
Well, the fact that you even found somebody, if you found somebody, great first step, right? We can only do things one step at a time.
True, and if they still exist, it was an online, you know, request. And so I'm waiting to hear back. They may not even be in business anymore.
Right.
But I'm working on it.
Okay, great, thank you for that. So let's move on. The first order of business is our certificates of achievement. We have Paul Milotowski with seven years.
Yes.
And?
And Karen, I think he was seven years.
Years as well. So we?
Did I say your name yet?
Yes.
Yes, also affectionately known to the outside world as Karen Trainer.
So did we wanna hand those out?
Yes. Come on up, Paul.
Come on up, Paul. Thank you for your, thank you for your service.
Yeah.
Thank you for you. Thank you so much. You do a good job. You do a good job.
Can we get a lot of? Laurie, could you get one for me? Karen?
Thank you.
And Karen?
This is a surprise.
I know. Where's my camera? Camera, camera, where are we? Thank you. I just got an update.
Swipe down from the top right.
There's a camera right there.
Yeah.
Oh, here it is. Laurie, would you mind taking a picture of me with my camera?
Where's this gonna go, Linda? Thank you very much.
We'll give this one to Karen for also being here for seven years. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
See, we kept it as a surprise.
Now, let's do a group photo. Yeah, we should probably put the three, let's get the two of them together and do we wanna get everybody in there?
Yeah, let's, yeah, not with the chairs.
Well, can you still with the two of you better?
Okay.
So can we put this up on the town website?
Yeah, you can. Yeah, welcome right on.
Yeah, let's, let's get a photo with this one.
Wait, wait for Kelly.
We're gonna get Kelly.
Well, I can't stand in the back.
Here, you're gonna see behind me. There we go.
Alright, there's three of us. Everyone's gotta be looking.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Job well done, well done.
Thank you. All set. Have a good night. Alright, thank you.
And we're planning on doing what, one year, five year?
Well, I was thinking five, 10, 15, 20, and if they stay after 20, they should get one every year.
You're? We do have some.
We actually have several.
We do. We have, we have several that are 30 plus, actually.
Do we have any like formal on the wall recognition for those who have reached 25 or even 20 or longer?
No, this is the first recognition.
I've seen that in some town halls where they'll have like a plaque. And if you reach 20 years or 25, you get your name on the plaque for it to be.
We could look into that, do a little blast name, more blast name plates on the plaque.
And, and I'd like to, I know we're trying to capture the folks who are hitting their anniversaries like this month, but if we can start to capture those ones that we've missed in terms, because I know we've read off like the EMT and paramedic ones in the meetings. We do have, especially with that group, we've got folks that have been with us like 30 plus years, like you said. So we need to start doing a better job other than just the, the read off.
I know a couple of companies that do plaques with individual pieces that could be replaced, like screwed on individually.
Yeah, or they slide in.
Yeah.
That's like we have over there with the Boston Post came.
Right.
That's another project, Karen. We have to get together.
Yeah, so that's.
We let that off, so we've gotta get together on that.
So for the plaque, do you want to do a large plaque and we can?
With the, with the pieces that you can unscrew. Well, it's, it's just like that. They're little placards.
Like 20 years this week and then you get off the board and the next guy goes?
No, 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 no. It builds up. So it's, it could go back as.
Because you're unscrewing and it confused me. I would be screwing.
No, you unscrew it to get it engraved.
Why are you taking them off? We don't even have them.
Usually when you buy them, you'll buy them and they'll be all blanks.
Yes.
And then you can send them in and not have to pay a fee because you've technically already paid for all the blanks.
Excellent, yes.
Karen, Lauren Kooch told me that he had some, said that we could complete this one. He had blank, blank.
Oh, he does? Okay, that's something you need to get him to write.
Yep.
Okay. So, okay, next was town administrator review. I know we didn't get the form out until late and that was my, that was on me because I didn't even ask for anything to get sent out. I did.
Yeah, and then I had to take the time to make it because you didn't have one.
Because we didn't have one.
So now you have one.
I'm really wondering how we did it in the past because I know that we haven't probably as long as I've been on the Board of Selectmen, but previously I understood that we did reviews.
Yes, we used to do reviews. Yes, we did.
But apparently nobody knew where the file was hiding. So thank you for that. Wanted to just kinda swing through and I didn't know how you all wanted to do this. If you wanna just kinda read down the items and just, and just have some conversation about it and then we can eventually formally get everybody's notes on paper. And Kelly, first of all, I just wanna thank you. I mean, you were coming into the great unknown in coming into this role. Okay, and as you pointed out, we are not always, we don't always have, let's call it mature processes in place. Okay, so thank you for being willing to take on the challenge to start off. Do you all want me to read through what I have and then?
Sure.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, we don't have any notes.
Yeah, so first one is job knowledge. Your experience and knowledge of Mass General law relative to the role has been evident even in this initial period. You know, you came on board and, and managed to start to steer us kinda the right direction with regards to what's usual and customary, which, you know, we needed that help. From a productivity perspective, you seem really focused on steady productivity, ensuring stuff is done correctly the first time instead of going fast and requiring rework.
I, I hate doing things twice. So do it right in the first time. Do it over.
Right. So, so that's been, that's been really good. Work quality, I haven't seen any glaring missteps because perhaps with that caution up front of actually doing due diligence up front, the work quality has been very good so far. You bring, from a technical skills perspective, you bring both experience and education to the role, okay? To date, these skills have been excellent and it's been valuable in providing like great course of action options for us for some of the town's challenges. So you have a tendency to bring solutions, but you manage to like walk that line between, you know, we're, we're the board and we're supposed to make the decisions, but it's good for us to have just like clean options to make the decisions from instead of just a problem to, to start from scratch. So that's been great. Work consistency, it's a little hard to evaluate in 90 days because like anybody can have a good stretch, right?
The honeymoon period of people.
Right, well, exactly, right? So, and, and I note that, hey, it's early, but to date you, it's been very solid performance, right?
And if I could, I will say that the emails and communications have been very consistent in how they've been worded and handled when there's been interdepartment communications or even external communications, when there are some external things and you would forward the whole conversation that you had and your language on all of them was very consistent.
Yeah, and that's helpful when trying to like piece through information is that the fact that you tend to take the same kind of very methodical approach in the communications makes it easy to digest where, and it's something that, you know, it sounds like Linda appreciates it. I know trying to keep up for me, if I have to look a different place every time for where the important information is would be impossible, so.
Yeah, the communication that she has will actually, she lets us know everything, you know, that's going on.
Right.
So we're, we're kept up, we're kept up to date now. Like, I mean, you could go back a few years on the Board of Selectmen, they would always keep one out of the link and we didn't know what was going on. And Kelly keeps us all up, so we all know what's going on.
That never happened.
No, it never did.
It's vital. You're a team. You're supposed to work together.
So, no, but that's, that's a very, very good observation, Linda. Enthusiasm, you're very engaged and you seem eager to do a good job, right? So I hope that lasts past the honeymoon period. Hopefully we make it a pleasant enough place to work. I know work is still work, but it's easier to be enthusiastic if you're not dealing with a bunch of raging, you know.
Well, this board is great. We'll see what happens.
Yeah, remember it's the honeymoon period.
It can, it can, it can change just with one, one board member, so.
Right. Let's see here, cooperation. You regularly implement or comply with anything agreed upon by the board or that we, or that's aligned with the recommendations or precedents, so very good there.
I'll say with the cooperation too, that if there is a pushback needed, you do give a pushback.
Right.
But it, but it's not like the heavy handed. It's, you know, you might wanna look at it this way or come at it from this direction.
Or be warned what you're thinking about is not, not quite allowed under Mass General law, which is always a good push.
You may wanna go read that passage again, you know.
But, but it's respectful and it's, and it's great, so that's good. Excellent attitude.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, just very positive, very, you know, solid work approach. You know, very solution oriented, which is nice.
And also where attitude's concerned, she's had a lot of, I don't know if this fits into this, but a lot of the different townspeople have come up to meet her.
Yeah, and you made the time for folks, which is.
Yep, that's what it is.
I've met a lot of people, so if I have met you and I do not remember your name, please forgive me because I've been calling the man I've been married to hun for 38 years because I can't remember. So it's not personal.
And she ta, and you've taken the time to get to, not really get to know them, but to introduce themselves and, you know, they'll might tell them something a little bit about themselves or you, and I think that's been good.
Yeah, it has been noticed.
Yeah.
Yep. Let's see here.
Initiative?
Initiative, yes, thank you. I was trying to catch back up. Very appropriate in your level of initiative, especially where we're in that, not only is it a honeymoon period, it's kind of a rules and responsibilities delineation period. So it, it feels like you're trying to ensure that you don't overstep, but that you also go after those things that we've asked you to go after. So I, I think that's, you've struck a really good balance there. Working relations, I've heard nothing but positive comments from everybody, from department heads to, you know, other elected officials, you know, both folks that you deal with regularly and even just somebody that's had kind of initial engagement.
I've heard the same thing. Everybody's so happy, you know, with the work relations. And even, you know, like I said too, people have come in and say they've had a problem or even they've called you and you'll take, and they come in the office and you take the time to help them out.
For like creativity, punctuality, attendance, I basically said it's a little early on really any of those things, but there's no red flags, nothing like jumps out and says.
Who is it?
We do have some follow-up on the heating system.
We do. The taxis is being called and they'll be coming in to take a pee.
So anyway.
We lives in there and why they're knocking.
The pipes warming up.
Yeah.
Being here by yourself.
Well, I was for a while today and there was a lot of knocking and banging going on.
I will say with creativity that some of your solutions to questions or problems that have come up have been creative, but in a good way. They have been like tackled in the kinda normal, well, this is what the book says, you gotta do it this way. It's more of, well, here's what the book says, but here's some things that I've done in the past or I've witnessed in the past and these have worked.
Right.
You know, we can go at it this way instead. That's not so heavy handed.
Right.
Kind of more the, allows people to feel good about the resolution rather than just, oh, okay, they figured it out. They're not too happy.
Right, it's boilerplate and what have you, so.
It's, it's very important to get everybody on the same track when creating a resolution and the more they have for input, the more readily they're going to comply with whatever the resolution is because it's part of their idea, so.
Yep, yeah, and you have to be creative to come up with ones that fit all the different people that you run into.
Yeah, yeah, and the, and the town, right? So it's gotta be the right solution. It's gotta be legal, but it's also gotta be the right answer, right? And it's striking that balance between the two, so. Dependability, I mean, you, so far I can't think of a commitment that you haven't delivered on so long as the expectation was, was clear and, and we had positive agreement on it. Communication skills, Adam already spoke to it well, but excellent both written and verbal communications. Overall rating is like probably, you know, right on that boundary between excellent and good, but the only reason why it's on the boundary is just time. 90 days is a short period of time to commit that like everything is awesome, but it's certainly a good plus, if that makes any sense.
So you can keep me?
I'm playing, my vote is the keeper. Do we need to do a formal vote?
Unless we need you for the record.
Yeah, I think we've got, we'll keep for another three months.
Fair enough. But no, I mean, there's, there's nothing up to this time that would make us say, you know, this was not the right move.
It was a good, very good move. Like I had told you before, one day I told you I wasn't all in favor of a town administrator right after you got here and the things that you were doing, you know, different things that we shouldn't have been doing and things that we should have, and you've come in and you've, you've really led, led us to get back on the right track. And you've done a good job and I'm happy that you're here with us.
Thank you.
I, I have heard some changes in mindset too, after you started and they've met you.
Yeah, well, and I, I think, and to be frank, I think a, a lot of the challenge was, right? Is that people inherently, it's, it's in a political appointed position. Inherently, people don't tend to trust that despite the fact that they voted for us, that we'll make the right decision for the town. Okay, in this instance, we were fortunate to have a candidate like you where we could make a decision that at least based on the first 90 days is, will be the right decision for the town fundamentally. So it's great to get it right, so.
We're one for one.
We're one for one. Four, so anyway. So opportunities for improvement, I didn't have any specific guidance at this time other than to kinda continue with the, your current approach going off into the future. You know, I, I think it's, I think, you know, the way you're developing and working priorities is consistent with my personal expectations and I think it's aligned pretty well with, with what the boards ask for, so.
She is. She's doing everything that we ask for.
But that's what I have.
Yeah.
So. Do we need to do any sort of formal vote? I can hand my notes over to get it included in the file.
No, I don't believe that the contract requires any formal vote.
It was just a review.
It was just a review at the 90 day mark and you still have the option of saying your socks don't match, you need to go.
Yeah, but.
Mismatched socks, they're awesome.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's good and kinda fashionable these days.
Sometimes they come out with a blue shoe and a black shoe. You never know what's gonna happen.
So, so long as those shoes get you in here and doing the things we need you to do, I don't think we're gonna, gonna take offense, so. Awesome, so, but thank you, seriously. I'm gonna end where I started, which is thank you. It's been very good so far.
It's actually been very pleasurable. To date, it's been great. Everybody's been really receptive. Everybody's been very open minded and fair and cooperative and I really appreciate that you guys have a fantastic team here. It's not just a bunch of people that work in the same building, which is nice. Not always the case.
Or even the ones that work in other buildings. We've got a pretty good crowd there, too.
Yes, I mean, I'm encompassing all of the departments in the town, so.
Yeah, so. And that's probably the biggest challenge, honestly. Culturally in the town, I think one of the, the challenges that we've had and will probably be the one that we'll need your help with is that, you know, keeping it one big team fundamentally and ensuring that the folks that, that the folks that work at the highway department feel just as engaged as the folks work at any assessors office, you know.
Yeah.
And, and if we can start to make the volunteers feel as supported as the employees, we can potentially get more of them and, and life will be better all the way around, so. But awesome. Thank you. Great discussion.
I think it was true.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next order of business treasurer. So we've interviewed, what, three candidates?
Three candidates.
Probably my favorite candidate unfortunately was, was her expectations about the role unfortunately weren't matched with what we had to offer.
I think she was my favorite of them too. She would have been a really good fit, I think, around here.
Yeah, but that.
That's what interviews and, and phone calls and everything are for.
Yes.
Is to figure that out before any finalization is done.
Yeah. So that leaves us with the, the two folks that we had interviewed previously, Amy Lane Carmody and Jessica Crawford. So I wanted to open up some dialogue on kind of people's observations from those two interviews, what their thoughts were in terms of next step. So Linda, did you wanna kick us off?
Yeah, well, the way I feel where Amy's concerned, I think she's more, my feeling is she's more of a town accountant than she is a treasurer. Because she was only a treasurer in a, where was it here? In one community for, she was only there for two years in the town of Richmond, and that's a small community. She was only, she did treasurer's work there. And then now she's like the chief financial officer up there in the town of Lanesboro. So, you know, she's got all these different people, you know, that work for her. And I don't know actually if she does any of the, you know, day-to-day things in like the treasurer's office. And I just think, that's my feeling where she's concerned, I think, because, and then another thing is she doesn't, she doesn't have the knowledge of radar. She's never used radar and that's from the training. And also with the payroll system too. She's never used Tarpas either. And we'll have to get training and, you know, I really don't wanna see any setbacks with anything, you know, hiring somebody that's not familiar with a lot of our software that we have here. So that's how I feel with it.
Even, I was only available for Amy's, but I did read the transcript from the meeting for Jessica's. And I'm actually quite torn because I look at Jessica's treasurer experience, which she has a good amount of.
Oh, I, I thought we were just doing them one at a time.
Well, I was just asking for people's general observations. So he's, he's starting with Jessica.
Yeah, just because that's the top one.
Yeah, okay.
He's going with his observations. My intent here is to run a little bit of a conversation. Get Adam's input. I'd like to get Kelly's input. I'm actually saving mine for last intentionally, so.
Yeah, and just for, for Amy, the reason why I'm torn is because of what Linda said, that there doesn't seem like, going by this and the interview, there is not the formal treasurer experience, but she's done a lot in terms of training treasurers coming in. She's got a ton of background in almost every aspect of it, just didn't have the title of treasurer.
Right.
And having lived out in the Lanesboro area, I know it's a very diverse and there's a lot of businesses. There's commercial, there's industrial, there's residential, there's all sorts of stuff to deal with. And we don't have that here at Brookfield.
No, we don't.
But it's still another aspect of experience that she has that just doesn't fall under the treasurer title. So it's a little torn just on that. You've got the formal experience and then you've got the experience, but not under the title. So it's a, and not under the very specific daily tasks of a treasurer. She oversaw all the stuff, so. In, in my mind, if you can oversee the stuff, you at least know enough to be able to oversee the people that are doing the daily jobs or else probably not a good person to oversee the stuff.
And now with Jessica now, I remember when we interviewed her, we brought up after she left that she was three months behind, you know, like in her reconciliations.
She was six months behind.
But there could, the way, we didn't ask her the question, but she could have been behind. Maybe it was some kind of a problem that her and the accountant or the tax collector could have had why they were, were reconciled.
She said that she was nine months behind total when she started. And in three years, she's now six months behind. So that's where the three went, so.
Well, what?
Took her three years to catch up the three months, but she didn't give any details on one of them.
Could I just ask Laurie a question while she's here? You don't have mine?
Sure.
Now, if, a lot of times, you know, if like you've had a few problems with different things with Sarah and the tax collector and things, and that can bring you behind also, can it?
Yep, so it's October now.
Yep.
Essentially, if you didn't take into account closing the books, you would be bound, take into account closing the books. We would just about be balancing September. Currently, we just balanced June last week. So essentially, I am three months behind. But there's always a reason.
Yeah, that's always a reason.
I can't speak for her because I don't know her, you know, from the interviews, so I would need to ask that type of question. But generally, if I'm applying anywhere, I always have a reason that I'm behind.
Right.
And I thought she acted, maybe we said she didn't answer the questions as good as we thought she did, but I mean, maybe she could.
She said she had experience with chapter 90 and when we pressed her for what her experience was, it was she said it was stuffing envelopes.
Is that what she said?
Yeah, it was. That was, in essence, that's what her response was.
And she has two years of experience as a treasurer. If you look at her resume, it says Town of Hardwick Treasurer, 2018, oh no, that's three, nevermind. My math is bad.
And then Barry.
Treasurer, and then Town of Barry. She said she was the assistant collector, even though it says treasurer's office. But much of her tasks. No, it doesn't say it's a combination. It says much of my daily tasks are those usually performed by the treasurer tax collector.
Oh, I thought.
So she's.
Oh no, here it says Town of Barry Collector slash Treasurer.
Yeah, the description.
Collector, treasurer's office.
When you read the description.
The description's different than the title. Yeah.
It says that she was the collect, assistant collector.
Oh, okay.
So.
Yeah, and, and that was, that was probably my primary point of concern was that in the areas where we pressed on the technical expertise. that was, that was probably my primary point of concern, was that in the areas where we pressed on the technical expertise, the, the depth of knowledge, and, and I understand, like, when you take a look at it, okay, that's three years' experience, three years' experience, you're really pretty much only getting your feet wet to a certain extent. I, I don't know, given the complexity of, of what we have, I'm almost more willing to take a chance on somebody that has the process experience and, and hasn't necessarily used our explicit tools than somebody who has the Vadar experience, but when you, when you present as, you know, having the knowledge, and I think she's not quite certified yet, if I remember correctly.
No, she's not.
Uh, probably in part because of COVID, because everybody getting setback a year, okay? But, um, the, I had a little bit of concern in terms of, of really kind of for anything that's more than a little bit complex with, with what her actual proficiency would be, with, with what we have going on through our treasurer's office. And I totally get the concerns about not Vadar, not Harper's, that there, there's gonna be some skill acquisition potentially with that. But, understand, I think in understanding though, what really has to be done to support, you know, chapter ninety from a treasurer perspective, or what really needs to be done in terms of the complexity of dealing with having our internal school, I did feel like Amy had, had the stronger, like, system knowledge, and like how that should work. And I, I don't, I don't get the impression that she's afraid of getting hands-on, and I think she has done it in some of the roles. Sure.
When you, when you say chapter ninety from a treasurer's perspective, what exactly are we talking about? The treasurer is not involved in chapter ninety?
I know, it's kind of, I'm, I'm sorry, it's, it's actually kind of a joke.
But, I mean, at this point, anyone who does chapter ninety is starting from scratch, you're just a whole system change. But, if you're looking at both their resumes, neither of them are certified.
Right, right.
That's another challenge.
That's another challenge.
To get them both certified.
Yeah.
And, yeah, exactly.
The, the main thing that, um, I think kind of separated them a little bit for me was I got the impression that even though Amy doesn't have maybe the, like you said, the experience with the software, I got the impression that she has the extreme ability to learn it, and I've always felt that hiring or bringing on anybody who maybe has experience in the software is not always better than someone who has the high ability to learn something. Cause software, you always have to learn, you always have to keep up to date with it, you always have to, things will change, like you said, the chapter ninety something completely changed, so everybody has to relearn it. So, it's one of those where i- if you have the ability and the mindset and the desire to learn the stuff, then you can do it.
So, yeah, so I, I think at, at this point, we have two decisions to make. Do we decide from the pool that we have available to us today, do we continue to look? Okay, that's, that's decision number one.
I think, no, how much longer do we have?
How many times have you done this?
This is the second time.
Really, if you think about it, it's really three, cause we did it when we-
Yeah.
It's more than three.
It's more than three.
Yeah, it's probably, it's probably, it's probably-
You can't, you can't keep, if you keep running it and keep going through it, eventually you will go through the pool.
You know, I think this is probably the fifth time I personally has been involved in this, maybe the sixth.
We only did interviews of once last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our COVID interviews.
Yeah.
Right.
So, we haven't, yeah, we haven't really-
Yeah.
We haven't gone through it best six times.
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm not saying for this particular posting of it, I just mean in terms of the treasurer's office.
With the treasurer.
So, I watched your treasurer position come and go twice before I started working here, so this is the third time that I'm aware of that you, that you've done this, if you posted.
It's, no, it's at least the, it's at least the fourth, because it would have been the woman from Rhode Island, Sandy, Monica.
They shoot your mom.
Uh, in between, uh,
Lonnie.
Lonnie. And then, and then we posted again and wound up getting Sarah because we couldn't find somebody.
Well, Laurie was the one that found Sarah for us.
Right, but I think we had a posting out at the time, and, and we didn't get any applicants. Okay, so, so I, I was wrong, it wasn't the sixth, but it was like four or five.
San, if, you know, Sandy didn't pass, Sandy would have still been with us to this day.
Yeah, sure.
And with Monica, I mean, she was going to, I don't even know why she took the position, because she was a junior, she was an assistant accountant down in Charlton, and she was going to school to become an accountant. So, basically, she just came on with us, say, for about six months, and then she left us, and that was the reason why.
For?
I think it was for the income, she just wanted some in, more income, and that's why she left.
For Amy, just 'cause I don't recall, and it wasn't in the notes, um, and I believe I had to leave a little bit early for, for that. Was there anything brought up of, of why Amy had both CFO and town accountant, or is that just how Lanesboro does the titles? Cause I know CFO has more responsibilities than say, than account.
What happened was, the job description, when she was hired, she was hired as the accountant, but her job description was that of a CFO, so halfway through, it was caught that she didn't have the correct job title, and so that's how it became CFO slash. But the job description itself had the oversight and-
Basically, the CFO responsibilities. Okay, okay.
But, I had mentioned to you the, uh, the other day, Kelly, I said, I hope, you know, if we, if we did hire her, I hope that she doesn't come in with the idea that she's gonna be in charge of the financial team here.
No, absolutely not.
Though, yeah, I mean, if it wasn't in the job description, she read the job description.
But still, I mean, sometimes, well, one that we did hire, from out of state, that one, she came in the first day, she called me, and she, she was started telling everybody what to do. She thought she was in charge of the whole financial team, even though it wasn't in the job description.
Yeah, no, that's, that's not what this job is.
And then we can set, I think we can set clear expectations upfront about that, honestly.
I wouldn't, I'm not gonna worry about that.
So, I was looking at the references, and one of her references is Al Otter.
Yes.
For Amy?
Yep.
Yeah.
Who's one of her references?
When I spoke with Heather, um, the Lunenburg Town Manager, the town, uh, small town administrator, she had no idea she was a reference on it.
Oh, really? On Jessica's?
Jessica's.
Does she know?
Like this? So.
That's interesting, she didn't even know.
Hey, you were used for a reference, what can you tell me? And she went, oh, wow, I, I wasn't aware of that, oh, she's, she's nice. What's the response that I got? I didn't ask for any details, I didn't ask for any pointed questions.
Yeah.
Did we ask where Amy's concerned now? With the school, what is the school system up there in, um, Lanesboro?
If you look, she was, um-
That's what I was-
She includes the school department reconciliations in her chief financial officer work.
Yes.
So, so they do have a school department.
And she was the business accountant for the city of Pittsfield.
Yep.
And then- Okay, welcome back, we are coming back from a five-minute recess of the Brookfield Board of Selectmen, the, the October fifth meeting, yes?
Yep.
Okay.
The recess was due to a technical difficulty.
So, okay, we're back, and we had just-
Talk about the school system.
Talked about the school system.
And I had a question regarding, I believe Lanesboro has a district school system similar to ours, where it's like four or five towns?
There, oh, well.
Or is there's three?
It's two, with two towns choicing in, so Hancock and New Ashford, uh, choosing.
I'm thinking of, well.
Williamstown and Lanesboro.
Yes.
Okay.
Now-
It's, it's basically four with a lot of school choice.
Now, were they all, um, are they all re, the elementary, are they regionalized in with the high school, or is it?
The elementary regionalized with the high school a year ago, so prior to that, all the elementaries were independent. And New Ashford doesn't even have an elementary, they all come to the Lanesboro.
Yeah, so, that's a very small town.
So, there's a lot of, um, school choices, it's a very sought-after school environment.
In Lanesboro?
Yes.
Yeah, oh yeah, it's-
Yeah, it's, it's one of the top-rated schools in the state.
Yep.
They're a small community too, aren't they?
Yeah, they're about the same size as, as Brookfield, then their budget's much bigger, but-
Yeah, well, it's cause they, Lanesboro has the industrial and the commercial to support them.
They have a much, they have a much larger commercial base, I'm still on the-
The mall is still there, I believe.
The mall's been dead for a while.
Still there.
Physically, the roof is falling in, there's so much water damage, it's a do not enter if there's a fire, it's, it's in such bad repair.
Yeah.
Target, which is a condo on the mall property, is still there and doing wonderfully, they're, they're very viable, so.
Yeah, I'm familiar with Lanesboro, having lived out there for five years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The area. Yeah, I mean, I'd be comfortable making a decision between the two.
Okay.
Like, I, I, I don't believe that we need to go back out and start the process all over again for the third, fourth, X number of times.
So, do we have a motion then for a particular candidate?
Yeah, I, I'll make a motion that, uh, we hire Amy Jane Lane Carmody, to be positioned treasurer.
You gonna second it?
No.
I'll, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No offense, Kelly, to you.
You can't offend me by picking the candidate you want, Linda.
No, no, but I mean, I know you've worked with her, and I, I'm sure that you know what she can do, but it's just a few things that, you know, I've seen, and I don't even know, I mean, I know you're gonna offer her the position, but I don't even know if she'd be a good fit round here, because she's more into the city than-
Oh, no, she'll be a perfect fit here, I know her personality will, will blend in nicely.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, so if she is gotten and hired and accepts, who's gonna do the training with the softwares?
Okay, we're gonna have to find the, do, do we have budget in the treasurer's office to fund her training with, um?
There's no, there's no way we're running the treasurer's budget whatsoever. And due to the time of year, I know we wouldn't know when we'd be done to do any sort of training right now, because we're coming up into the tax season.
Okay.
And I know with Harper's years ago, I think they came out here for only one session one time, and that was it. And I, I remember they said if we wanted to know more, we had to go in to them, I don't know if they're even, are they still in Worcester?
Harper's is still in Worcester, mostly we're not coming in.
Okay.
That's just my concern.
Now, we have to identify with Vadar how much it is, but if we have to, we can go to advisory and ask for some of the reserve fund money for the training.
Is there, um, do you know if there's a listing of when they may offer training?
They don't offer trainings anymore, you have to request them.
Okay.
They do-
So, it's something we would request, and then they would, there'd be a scheduling done?
Yeah, they, they schedule when they have availability.
There is a very good possibility that with the vast network that Amy has and resources she has, there may be someone out there that is using the software that would be willing to assist her, so it's definitely worth exploring before we talk about budgeting, you know, a training for.
Yeah.
And I know she has to give a thirty day notice, so she may come for it.
Yeah, it's a-
Right, yeah, she has a minimum thirty day in her contract.
Call her with a job offer?
Oh.
So, um.
Thirty days' notice and a week vacation.
Yeah.
She has a week vacation to use.
Yeah. So, we'd be looking at-
Probably a month, month and a half.
Probably a month and a half.
Yeah.
So.
So, will Sarah start now, we're gonna see if Sarah will stay with us until then?
Why wouldn't she stay with us until then? She would stay with us if we didn't hire her, huh?
Yeah, cause it's still-
I'm sure, I, I, maybe that came out from-
Oh, okay.
I, I think she would probably be, I think she would probably be relieved to know there was at least an end in sight.
Why even think she was even willing to stay on if we didn't hire somebody?
Well, I had a very long talk with Sarah, and she, she's, was fully on board with hiring.
Yeah, I, I remember that discussion, I think we had that beginning of the, of the, this term, that if we brought someone on, she'd be very willing and happy to assist with the process of changing over and anything that was necessary, because, you know, she explained to us the situation.
Do we, I, I know I asked the question of Jessica, do we know what kind of salary history that Amy has?
Well, legally, you can't ask that.
No, actually, you can't ask that.
I'm not answering your question.
So, that's true, you can't ask salary history.
Or their current salary.
Well, but, but public record for a town, for a town role, I thought the last time I-
Yeah, but you still can't ask.
It's still, yeah.
It's still-
You, you can't ask, you can look yourself.
I think she's currently at sixty-six.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm, okay, so, what, what is the budget for the role that she's currently in?
The salary, yeah, this, yes, the budget for the role that she's currently in, I believe, is sixty-six or sixty-seven.
Oh, okay.
Um, but, yeah, so, offer her the position, see where she comes in at a salary, it's an at-will position, not a contracted position, and negotiate from there.
Yeah.
Because she would have less work to do down here, and she-
Absolutely not, Sarah said that this job is forty hours a week, for two people, that's eighty hours a week.
Yeah, I would not say-
Her team is putting in sixty-five, which is what she, she didn't anticipate.
And, and for, for salary, I wouldn't pay less just because they do thirty-five hours or thirty, like, it's still salary, it's it can fluctuate, like, you could have a lot of work-
Forty hours a week, Monday to Friday.
Yeah, but you, you could have more than forty hours of technical, like, stuff on your desk to do in a week. And then other weeks, you, it could just be slower, or maybe you caught up or gone ahead the week before.
And my thought was, what, what did we post this at, though, in the?
Seventy-two to seventy-five, is the range that you, that you picked at a, at a certain rate.
Yeah, from, from what I had looked, that the range in that we had offered fit with what
Right.
is commensurate with the area.
The reason why I was asking was just to figure out where in that range we needed to hit, so it sounds like we, an appropriate starting point would be
Seventy.
The, the seventy-two.
Seventy-two, that's, I think I'd start.
Yeah.
So, um, so that's kinda, that's kinda where I would be sitting.
Yeah, I think that's cool.
So, um, but yeah, let's, let's, let's do a reach out, let's, let's is that well seventy-two standard package?
Just out of curiosity, because I don't recall, Linda, did you give your formal yea or nay?
She said no.
She said no, okay.
She, she, did you have to stay? You didn't actually-
Oh, oh, I didn't, no, I didn't, I, I didn't vote in favor of it.
Okay.
No, I knew.
Okay. No, I didn't wanna put you on the spot, I just couldn't recall.
Yeah. She wants to know, so. Okay. Is there anything else that we need to talk about for this in order to properly execute it?
Will it be, Beth, will it be you reaching out with a formal offer, or would it be Kelly, or would it be Karen? Like, who would do the formal, uh, either phone call or phone call plus letter?
It could be the chain of the board.
Yeah, I guess I could, yeah, I guess I could do the outreach, yeah. I guess I did the la, I guess I, I mean, the last person I think that we hired that was a, like a senior person in this office was you, and I guess I made that offer, so.
Mm-hmm.
So, you did?
But are we, are we comfortable with that as a package then?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the, with the seventy-two.
Okay.
And you'll have to find out what they, how many weeks vacation did she have up there?
Well, this is, the, the challenge here is that this is not a contract position, so we can't, so, so, so what they get is what they get in terms of, of the rest of the package.
They either, yeah, it's whatever's-
He's by law, and he voted last year, also marks his position as thirty-six.
Okay.
Which is not seventy-two thousand.
There is no salary range adopted in the bylaw.
I thought we picked salary range as seventy, is it seventy-two thousand?
No.
I checked before I had him pick the salary.
It's seventy-two thousand, this position above, they create six positions that are current in the building.
Okay.
Just so you are aware.
Right.
So, we don't want the other employees coming forward with the standard, oh, she's making this much and we've been here much longer.
And that always happens everywhere. Yeah.
Yeah, but she hasn't been around her, you haven't been around her, you know what goes on.
No, I, I understand, I mean-
Well, we, we see the same thing in other workplaces, too.
You move to a position anyway. You move to a position anywhere, you're more than likely gonna make more than the people who have been there.
Right.
Because of how the system works.
Yeah.
It's a
Yeah.
It's a general thing with the system.
Yeah, well, that's probably something we should have talked about when we posted it there in the first place, so.
We did, we did.
It was the Scott.
Right, but we didn't raise the grade issue, the fact that that was outside of the the ban with the grade, or the starting.
The bylaw also says that you can
It's up to the.
You don't have to follow that if you are finding people who are
Qualified.
Able to fulfill.
I can't recall, but is there a line that's?
Yeah, there's wiggle language.
Is there a line to something like the commensurate with experience?
Yeah, there there's basically a wiggle room that in order to to get an appropriate fill, you can, there's there's.
You can adjust accordingly.
It's more or less just okay.
Yeah. It's good to have a heads up. Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I came in at a grade seven and I'm making ten thousand dollars less than other grade sevens, so.
There's always reviews.
So, would she, now she talked, will she relocate down here or is she?
Yes, she will.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe that was in here.
She said upfront that she would, she, one of the reasons she was looking out here was because she wanted to move this way.
Mm-hmm.
Are you gonna put in here that she has to be certified or?
Yes.
That will be part of the offer.
Yeah, we've had that knowledge of descriptions usually, but they have to be certified.
Yeah, I think we have to figure out what's an appropriate deadline for that, though.
Well, depends on how the treasurer's school is offered.
Yeah, because I don't know how much of a she has.
My chief procurement certification, it cannot be done in under four years.
Right, it might, it might be a minimum of three years.
Every record is that you have to take this, they only offer this once a year, it comes after the one that you need next, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, three years to get certified unless you have to.
And they still go to school up at UMass. Yeah.
Kelly, is that something that you'd be able to look into ahead of time, just to see, or it's not, not for the school, but for the um, the VEDAR, or when?
Oh, the school doesn't teach VEDAR?
No, 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 I, it just reminded me of the VEDAR portion, the the training.
When VEDAR would be available.
When they may be available, be like, could we have someone who would need the training, or potentially need the training? So, then at least we would have some kind of, like, timeline where, you know, if she were to accept, we could say, all right, we've already contacted them for you.
But right now, our cash book is not in VEDAR, right, so for?
No, we can, we paid for the module, we're not using it.
Okay.
We're using an Excel based cashbook.
Right, and then, um. Yeah, but VEDAR is part of the day-to-day for the treasurer, so they're gonna have to, their their whole job is everything.
Yeah.
So.
Yes, the receipts, the checks.
Yep.
So, we're paying for the module and it's not being?
It's included in the package that we bought.
Okay.
Yeah.
We just, our whole goal was to implement it using the VEDAR cashbook, but because of the amount of VEDAR instances and issues we have, the Excel cashbook was the way to go to get this started here.
But now that we're pretty much cleaned up on variances.
Our plan was to implement it into twenty-two.
Right.
But we just haven't, we're not at that point yet.
Yeah, you use the best tool for the job at the time.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, Sarah's currently using the cashbook that my friend put out.
Okay, cool.
Okay.
Is that the Excel one?
Yeah.
I love Excel.
Eric, Eric has a really nice cashbook, that's what we use for training.
So. Okay, so it sounds like we have a nominal plan.
Do you know when we'll be contacting?
Um. I should be able to reach out tomorrow.
Just because it's the beginning of the month, then as soon as she gives her notice, as soon as she can get.
Right, especially we're gonna creep into the holiday space of months.
Yeah.
Honestly, five weeks out is gonna take us to Thanksgiving, we're looking at December.
Yep.
Not necessarily.
Okay, fair enough.
So, she may.
We'll plan for five weeks.
She said she has a week's vacation that may have meant that, and I don't know, I don't know, but when I had a week's vacation and I changed jobs, I used that week's vacation to get out of my job sooner and come work here, so. That was, and I have no idea if that's what's going on with that, but
Okay.
that might not, it it may not be a negative, is all I'm saying.
Right, right, got it.
So, ideally, how long do you wanna keep this all, you know, the stands are for a month, and how long do we keep Sarah on for a transition? I'm just trying to think of, how low would the budget ever gonna be?
Is there a contract, like?
We're a month.
It's a month to month, okay, okay.
Well, that's probably how when I said with Sarah staying on, I probably, I had used the wrong word.
Yeah, so, we have exactly enough to pay, obviously, Sarah's contract for this year, so as we use more months of Sarah, we're dipping into my duty after we pay it.
Internal treasurer, yeah, I I think I would say we'd want no less than probably a month.
Yeah.
Say it, please.
A month?
Thirty-day transition.
Thirty-day transition? I know we probably don't have the money for it, but we may need to.
And it it may be something to reach out to Sarah and see what she would think would be, because she may go, well, thirty days is plenty, thirty days is too much, thirty days is too little, you know.
Yeah, can we have that conversation with her?
Get get her.
Would you? Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I'm just saying, yeah, 'cause what, and it may be a case of it might be thirty days, but it might be thirty days on like a scaled amount of hours, like a do you know what I'm saying, like, like, the first, the first week, they're still doing everything, but but, um, the new person writes shot down. You know what I'm saying, so that, so that, and and even if, yeah, I I could see something like that working. Not so much training as just handoff and like process handoff, and that way, right.
Where the last couple of days is, do you have any final questions, like, you were all set?
Yeah.
So, if you imagine to the advisory board, that we'll, that's what we need?
Yeah, we're gonna need some extra money. So.
So, you'll keep us updated with everything?
Yeah, so I'd I'd ask that, I'd ask that, um, Kelly, reach out to Sarah, though, to get, work out some of the details and the transition.
So, if Amy comes in at seventy-two, we're paying Sarah, we've got budgeted, I think, eighty-three?
Eighty.
Yeah.
Eighty-three.
Eighty.
Eighty.
I think it's eighty for this year.
It's eighty-three.
Oh, it's eighty-three?
Positive, it's eighty-three.
Eighty to eighty-three.
Positive, well, it makes a big difference.
No, it does make a big difference, I know, three thousand dollars is a difference.
Saves, so if that one month, the difference between the two is nine hundred and sixteen.
Yeah.
So, that one month, over the next six months, adds up to the one month that we need.
Need of the overlap, yeah, it's, yeah, it's it's a horse race, it'll be pretty close, so.
Yeah, I'm I'm positive it's eighty-three, 'cause I just put in a spreadsheet like twenty minutes ago.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
So, I I think we could, it it sounds like we could potentially make that work. It'll be tight.
Yeah, but hopefully, we won't have to go to advisory, yeah, so, and we're paying her like a flat fee for the month, right, or?
We pay a flat fee for the month.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Um.
Yeah, I'd be interested to hear her, Sarah's opinion on it.
Yeah.
Because that's the one, like, she's not just gonna drop the books and go.
No.
No, no, and she's, she's very.
I I I know, I know that's not who.
With her diligence, because.
I I know that's not who she is.
She was, she's she's concerned, and I think that she'll be at ease when she meets Amy and works with her, um. She was concerned about all the work that's been done.
Yeah, she doesn't wanna see it go to waste.
Gone to waste.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, she's not just gonna go, hooray and drop and go.
That's how I feel, too, I don't wanna see her like.
She's gonna wanna make this a success.
Yeah, and that's, that's exactly why I.
Yeah, well, no, but she's put all this hard work into it, like.
Well, the both of them.
She doesn't wanna see it fall down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They have.
No.
No, we can't.
That's a lot of work. I totally get that.
Yeah. No, we don't, we want you to want us to.
Totally get that.
Like I said, it's the first time probably in twenty-five years that we've been reconciled.
Yeah.
And we can't go back.
With the most.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I would say we're we're done, I mean, we're reconciled, everything's finished, we found as much as we're ever gonna find.
Then it's official. Well done to people of everyone.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we at least have a plan, right, and and it sounds like a workable plan. So, I I know, I I I know there's concerns, there's never a perfect plan, I get it, so.
So, one of the things that Sarah's just gonna be kind of in the dark about is she does not know who she's gonna be working with, so she can't, I I would be surprised if she can tell you how long it's gonna take to transition.
That's fine.
It may be a month, it may be three weeks.
Yeah, if if she comes back.
But she won't know until she actually works with.
Yeah, if if she comes back and says, well, I I need to meet her, I need to work with her for a day or a week, or whatever it is, then at least we know that, and then we can kind of plan accordingly.
Yeah, I I think we plan on a minimum thirty-day tri, or, well, actually, just in case, depending on the timing of it, we plan on a minimum of four work week transition, and I say that for a reason, 'cause if if Thanksgiving falls in the middle of that, I I don't wanna count that, so it might actually wind up a five-week transition. Um, if we can, if we can work that, just because I know holidays turn into an absolute train wreck in in terms of onboarding people and training them and and transitioning processes and handing off workflows.
Yep.
It it, I just wanna make sure we 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 discuss it that way, if that makes any sense, so. Um, good, are we, are we good with that portion of discussion?
Good.
Okay. Um, moving on to the next thing on the agenda, Massachusetts Community Development Block Grant Program Final Quarterly Report Certification. Um, we've got a final certification for April through June of twenty-twenty-one on the CDF dash G twenty-eighteen zero-zero-eight-two-one. Can I get a motion authorizing me to sign off, uh, on the quarterly report?
Okay. Okay, I will give a, I'm gonna make a motion for, uh, the chairman to sign off on the quarterly report on the grant of CDFG two-oh-one-eight zero-zero-eight-two-one, and that's a period from April first to June thirty, twenty-twenty-one.
I'll second that motion.
You all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is the one that's related to, um, the, uh, housing rehabilitation grants.
It seems like you've signed a lot of final certificates for this grant, is this happening frequently?
Yeah, it does.
Yes.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay, great.
You got it.
So, we've got that, we've got, um, we've got some deeds for, um, cemetery plots. We've got, uh, one for Edmund and Patricia Boucher, and then we've got one for, uh, Donald and Sharon Grimes.
Boucher.
Oh, Boucher, I'm sorry. I know somebody else who pronounces it the other way, so.
Okay. Yeah, don't you, why don't you sign first?
Right, no, I was gonna say, 'cause I need a motion just to sign.
Oh, all right, okay, like, to make a motion to sign, um, burial deeds for Edmund and Patricia Boucher and Donald and Sharon Grimes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You go ahead.
Nice paper.
It is, very nice paper.
Do we need to sign a second one?
Oh, sorry, thanks for catching that. Okay, and then we've got, uh, a wage authorization for Lindsay Rockwood for an amount of nineteen dollars and eighty-four cents. Can I get a motion to sign that?
I will, uh, give you a motion to sign a wage au, wage authorization for Lindsay Rock, Rockwood, who will be the administrative assistant of the highway department at an hour rate of nineteen eighty-four.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the personnel board, we're meeting on Thursday, so we're gonna be signing.
Okay, so we've got, um, wanted to have a discussion about, uh, establishing a contact for booking the banquet hall.
Yes, um, we had some double bookings
Yep.
uh, for the room, um. The agenda posting method, the town, my town government, is that the name of it?
My town government.
My town government, if a room is booked for a specific time already, a red alert comes up, but apparently, they're not necessarily acknowledging the red alert and booking anyway, so what what I'd like to do is establish a contact person. Um, so that when, but prior to booking a meeting for this room, they need to reach out and say, hey, is this date available?
Okay.
So that it doesn't, um, we don't overlap again, because the ZBA wanted, you know, to have a hearing, and there were a lot of people, and it would have made more sense for them to have this room than for the select board to have the room, but they picked one of your regular meeting nights to do it, so they need, I just don't want that to happen again, so Karen volunteered to be that person. So, if you guys are on board with it, um, we'll send out an email to all the boards committees. And departments that if they're going to schedule a meeting for the use of this room, it doesn't matter, they can do it in their own rooms, it's just this room. Um, or an event, like the COA had a really great, um,
Yeah.
senior meet and greet here last week, that was phenomenal, but if there'd been a meeting scheduled at the same time, it could have been
A problem.
A problem, so it was great that they had, you know, that they were able to use this room, so we just wanna avoid that going forward.
They've gotten away from that practice because it used to be, when I was here, it was always like between the town clerk and the administrative assistant.
Mm-hmm.
We, that's what the calendar was in there, there's like a calendar on the wall, and I would, uh, any time before anybody would check to have a meeting, I would always come in and I'd check to see if there was another meeting going on, so, so this is what's happened, it's just fallen by the wayside.
Yeah, and it just needs to be re-.
Yeah, it's gotta be re- reinstated.
Took over that, that's why they didn't do that, because my town government dot org was supposed to take the place of that.
But it did, yeah.
But if people are ignoring the alerts, then.
But still, I mean, he should, he should be, I think, checking to see also before he lets these people know it's okay.
But but he's not posting, they can post their own agendas, so so that's the problem, is that he's, there's no um, nobody knows that they've done it until they get the posting.
And it's, and it's a soft flag, it's not a hard stop.
Right, and every time somebody changes like a letter on any of the agendas, it blows up your email. This was the agenda, now it looks like this, and it doesn't tell you what's really different.
Change.
Yeah, and my email is blowing up, I signed up for all of them, so I know when the meetings were, so if there's something on the agenda, I wanted to.
Time for, time for a mailbox rule.
Well, you know, I tried that, and.
You can't do it.
Outlook said, yeah, no.
No. Yeah.
You just check.
And just check it daily. It, is there any way that I know?
And people pre-post, like, people will pre-post, I'm gonna have a meeting, uh, so, so I meet with my board tonight, I don't need to get for a month, I will post that I'm having a meeting tomorrow, 'cause we picked the meeting date, and then I'll put tentative agenda, then I'll fix the agenda, then I'll put the real agenda.
Yep. Is there any way, like, I know that my town government is operated by a single person in Barry, I think they are, I think the, that's where the individual was, if I remember reading his.
Really?
Thing.
I did not know that.
I believe so.
It's a slog.
Yeah, it's a couple people maybe, but I believe.
When it first started, yes, I, I think he probably does it, he's, he's.
I, I think it's still, I think it's still the same thing, 'cause I saw a post about how his costs were going up because of cloud services.
Well, he was doing it for nothing.
Yeah, but that's, that's what he made the post about his cost going up.
He's an EMT, and he started out doing it with Barry.
Yeah, no, that's what I was saying, it started in Barry, it was a single person doing it.
And he is still, I think, the only person doing it.
No, he is, yeah, I, I was reading his stuff, but, like, we ha- we pay for Outlook, we pay for Office three sixty-five, like, that has calendar stuff built into it, it has the ability to block people from booking rooms if it's already booked.
And our webpage also has the ability to calendar and to send out emails when people post their agendas, so.
I wonder if there's any way, like, I mean, if it's just one or two people doing it, I highly doubt it, but some kind of integration, like, I don't know how many of the boards have emails, um, or even if it's a, if the chair of a board has an email, 'cause I know, you know, you get charred per email a lot of times, but. But if there was a booking method that way that we could use a system that we're paying for, that really all it's kinda being used for, I believe it's just email, when it's so much more than that, um, if it could be.
I think what we wanna probably do, or this would be my recommendation, is let's start by, let's get a calendar, let's get a court.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking like.
And then let's build the infrastructure. This is something we can build up and.
Yeah.
And then let's start to build the infrastructure around Outlook and getting people conditioned to using Outlook and having the room have its basically, I know where I work, they basically have the equivalent of like they're, they're a resource designated within Outlook and, and once it's booked, you can't.
Yeah, it blocks you from doing, it just declines your meeting and tells you.
Just say a small board meeting, say they're not gonna have a hearing, they could always use the kitchen tool.
Yeah. Or, or the police station.
Yeah, the police, yeah.
Yeah, but just as a future, you know.
Agreed.
Far-reaching thing.
Call if they can, use the police station too, that's probably maybe something, you should put in an email to check with, uh, down there to see, see if the room is open.
When they're using my town government dot org, not to ignore the alerts, too.
I'll, I'll make an email tomorrow and run it by Kelly.
It, it would be something after December, because I know that's when the IT contract comes up, so I don't wanna start anything, I don't wanna start anything new.
That needs to be on the next agenda.
But like, I don't wanna start anything new, but starting with the, the new year, new calendar year, like, I know it would not be difficult to get an Outlook calendar put on like, you know, a fifteen inch little display out there, that anybody walking in could just see what the monthly stuff is, so that Karen, even if you were entering the stuff manually, like going through the, what we just talked about.
Well, we do, we do have something in the break room, a, a big calendar, now that I physically wrote it.
Yeah, but it, if it was something that you could enter it into a system, whether it's my town government or, or that, and it just shows up there when anybody walks in the building, it's just right there.
That'd be kinda cool.
Then it's, you know.
So people are walking every moment, they're like, is this this meeting?
Yeah, it's like, no, you just look at the, you know, the screen, and it just tells you what it is, I mean, ninety bucks for a fifteen inch display.
It would be nice, like, we could, like, you have, you have, we could maybe get an elevator, I, and then we can, yeah, and then we can, they can have more meetings.
Which is far-reaching, calendar, new calendar year stuff to consider.
You ready to approve the Sleckman's minutes for nine-seven?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion?
Like to make a motion to approve the Sleckman's minutes for nine-seven twenty-one.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna get to announcements, I probably should've let off with these, so Trick or Treat and Halloween events will be held Halloween night of October thirty-first. In the Village and Common area from five to seven P M, at seven P M, a parade will start at the fire station on Central Street to Sherman and Lincoln Street to the Town Common, there will be a costume contest in the gazebo after the parade.
Do we know if there's, are any constraints or guidance, 'cause I believe it was last year when they held it, um, they asked all participants to wear masks, or, and to keep the, like, for those who are handing out candy, um, I know there's some very creative people out there who were using chutes to send the candy down into a basket so they could pick it up, they had little like grabber hands, so they could put it under the bucket.
I, I, I wasn't that creative, I just put out, I put out a card table and went running back out.
Yeah, no, like, there was all sorts of super creative stuff that was really cool to see, and I, I know my son loved the candy chutes, like.
Good day.
Is, is it the Board of Health that would decide that?
No, the Board of Health.
No, Recreation Committee is the one that runs it.
But the Board of Health would decide.
But I, I think, I think it's a good point, I think we should send some correspondence to the Board of Health and find out if there's any guidelines regarding social distancing, I mean, I just got some fresh, like, N-ninety-five masks, I'll probably be out on my stoop with, uh, a mask and maybe a cowboy hat, so it looks like I'm just a bandit instead of a, being socially distancing, you know?
You put a bandana over it, and no one will know.
I can put a bandana over the, the N-ninety-five, and who knows any better, so.
Yeah, cuz I saw there was, um, Spencer just announced theirs, and they had that requirement, uh, social distance, wear a mask if you're able to, no, like, it's hard to, you know, walk up and down the streets with the things, but.
So, so, but let's at least ask the question, 'cause I don't know what kinda guidelines are out there, and, and the Board of Health would be the right folks to say yea or nay.
I know people are excited.
Yeah.
For this, it's a sense of diplomacy again.
It, it is, right, and it's an outdoor event, so it's at least, even, even with Delta variant, it's lower risk, so. Um, let's see here, uh, report on the warrants?
Yeah, I was in this afternoon, and I went over the warrants, and, uh, we, I approved, um, an expense warrant for ten-five twenty-one for a hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents, and an expense payroll warrant.
Payroll, yeah.
Yeah, for ten-six twenty-one for a hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and seven cents, and a withholding warrant for ten-six twenty-one for twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-one cents.
Okay.
And there was one quest- I mean, Kelly asked if I had seen one of them on there, we had saved, um, money, usually our bill to K P, I think, is about five thousand a month or something, and this, this month it was only a thousand dollars.
It was, it was a thousand something.
Thousand something, so it was less.
Right, so that's good. Yeah, a lot of our, what was active in the prior years is not, and I know that we do have some other, some activities still ongoing, but it's, it's, we're in a world, so.
But still, I mean, having Kelly here with her degree and everything.
Been asked a lot of questions.
She's a public lawyer, ask me first. She's been able to answer a lot of the questions.
I am not gonna deny that that was not an appealing aspect of the application, Adam, so.
Ask me first, oh, no, no, come here, show it, this is law, right here, this is master law.
Oh, okay, bye.
So, um. Okay, I noticed, even though we had said that we're gonna put it on the agenda, have we not received any materials from the, from the, um, group that was interested in some sort of a leaseback deal?
We did, I sent it to you last week, it came, it came like, I, I think I got it Saturday, I think I emailed it to you, so.
Oh, okay.
Um, I can, I'll, I'll resend it, and maybe I thought about it really, really hard.
Well, I'll double check, I, I could've, I could've missed the email traffic.
But it wasn't on this agenda, because it didn't come in time for you guys to look at for this meeting.
That's what it was. Okay, so, well, that's what I was saying, is that we didn't get it in time for this agenda.
Right, this agenda was posted before it was received.
Okay. Got it, that's, that was what my actual intended statement was, was that we didn't get it in time for this agenda, got it. Um, we do still have more, have we gotten any applications for any of, or any interest at all in any of our vacancies?
And it was even in, um, it's in the Quay, Karen had done up an article for the Quay Bar Current, and put it down, and we haven't had any response, no, nothing.
Okay, um, Kelly, can you just do a tiny bit of research, or you may know it already, is to, I know. You had made mention that both for the Commission on Disability ADA Coordinator, it's technically supposed to be people with a disability, but how is that defined?
So, I, I started looking that up earlier this morning, actually, and I didn't get to finish.
Okay.
Um, I don't believe that the ADA coordinator has to have a disability, but you need to have a percentage of disabled people on your committee.
Okay.
But I, I actually had that, it's probably still up on my computer.
Okay, fair enough.
This morning.
Perfect.
But that was one of the things that I was, I was researching.
So that may, that may help at least somewhat. And, and do we know how a disability is defined, is that self, 'cause like in, in a workplace, that's like a self-declared state.
There is an official definition, there's like, I think, but, I don't know if it'd call it legal, but I know there's an official definition of it.
So I guess you would have to determine whether you wanted to adopt a state definition, a federal definition, um, a definition for employment purposes, they're different.
Yeah, well, right.
We should have looked at three of them, all of them.
I, I was thinking the.
Can we put on the agenda to discuss?
It's that under the ADA, diabetes is a disability, however, it doesn't qualify for any disability, so.
Yeah.
So, I guess, you know.
I, I was thinking ADA, just because when it's a lot of, when you talk buildings or access or anything, it has to be ADA compliant.
Yes.
Which, I know ADA is broad, but they did that on purpose.
It is, yeah.
Right.
But it, it also, if we adopted the ADA version, it's also.
You know, there, there are people with, with cognitive disabilities, and there are people with emotional disabilities, and they're all disabled, and you can't see it, you know?
Right, yeah.
Um, then there are the, the physically disabled who, uh, are.
But you can't.
Very visible, where you can see it, so it, it's very, it's a very loose definition.
Right.
That, that's why I like it.
And is this for the composition of the committee? Is that why you're asking?
Yeah.
Okay, because that'll help me figure out.
Yeah, it's explicit to the composition of the committee.
So, it's my, and I, and I have to double check, and I may not be speaking correctly, but it's my understanding that they can either be disabled or have an immediate family member who is disabled, so for instance, if you're a mom, and if you have a child who's on the autism spectrum, you're qualified to be on this committee, even though you yourself are not disabled.
Right.
You have a child who qualifies under the description to allow you to be part of this committee.
Okay.
I think I know someone, I'd love to know, maybe you could call and ask her if she would be interested, because she has a childhood disability.
If, if, if it's somebody you know, it.
I don't really know her that well.
More sensitive.
No, I, I really don't know her that well, but I know that she does. She was on the Recreation Committee at one time, I don't know if she's still on or not.
Okay. Um, we've got correspondence from CSX regarding vegetation management right-of-way. So, let's see here, uh, we've got this on the twenty-seventh of September, uh, they're gonna be doing herbicide application, uh, on the right-of-way, in, as permitted by three-three-three C M R eleven, in the Massachusetts Right-of-Way Management Regulations. It's gonna commence on the twenty-eighth of September, a little late for us to tell everybody now, and conclude on or before October fifteenth. It's gonna be low-pressure spray from a rail-mounted truck, um, and only in non-sensitive areas, I wonder how much non-sensitive area we even have, so I know we did provide that plan over to the Lake Association as well, so, and I, the reason why I say I wonder how much non-sensitive area we have, is almost all of our railway is along the water.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, almost all of the rail is like right along the, the river, so I, I don't know how much they can actually spray as they drive through the field.
I know, I know a few years ago, some of the, they wanted to do a lot of spraying all down by the cemetery, and the river is out in the back there, and there was a lot of people, it did come in, and they objected to it.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay, um, that's, I think, all we have for our agenda, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll give you a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-three.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.